The appointed hour of six o'clock having been reached, I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge and ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, the meeting recording, the meeting is recording, recorded and can be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight and Article ten, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We'll begin with a roll call of the members of the ZBA and panel for tonight's meeting. Mr. Judge, I'm here. Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Cochran?
Here.
Also in attendance is Marine Pollock Planner, Dave Waschevitz Building Inspector and Rob Mora of Building Commissioner is expected to join us. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi-traditional body that operates under the authority of Chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety and convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions and for clarifications or additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where the information about a project and the input from the public is gathered, followed by a public meeting for each. The public meeting portion is where the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits. And the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing of the, of the request for variance to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a twenty-day appeal period for an agreed party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda is a public hearing on ZBA FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-two dash zero four. Greg Briggs and Howard R. Paul request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA FY two thousand and two dash twenty-one in order to remove condition seven, which states this permit shall expire upon change of ownership or management. Located at nineteen Phillips Street, map eleven A parcel thirty-four, general residence RG zoning district. ZBA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero five, Lane V Floyd requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA FY two thousand and eleven dash zero four in order to remove condition thirteen, which states this permit shall expire upon change of ownership. Located at two, two hundred and four and two hundred and six Belcher Town Road, map fifteen C parcel thirty-two, neighborhood residents RM zoning district. And ZBA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero six, Lane V Floyd requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA FY twenty eleven dash zero three in order to remove condition twelve, which states this permit shall expire upon change of ownership. Located at one ninety-two and one ninety-four Belcher Town Road, map fifteen C parcel sixty-four, neighborhood residents RM zoning district. Following considerations of those matters, there's an opportunity for general public comment on any matter not discussed before the board tonight, as well as a opportunity for other business not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours. The first item on the agenda is ZBA FY twenty twenty, twenty-two dash zero four. Greg Briggs and Howard R. Paul request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA two thousand and two dash twenty-one in order to remove condition seven, which states this permit shall expire upon change of ownership or management. Located at nineteen Phillips Street, map eleven A parcel thirty-four, general residence RG zoning districts. Are there any disclosures? Um, we had a site visit on last Tuesday. We met at the property, we walked the around the property, we observed the parking area and the, the entrance and egress to the building itself. We got into, to the back unit first, observed the, the, each of the rooms in the, in the second unit. Walked through that unit, walked out the front, observed the side of the building, got into the main unit, observed the, the, prior to that, we observed the basement as well. We observed each of the living areas as well as the bedroom, areas and bathrooms in the front unit, and we came back out and walked around the front of the house. I want to say that I appreciate very much the, the cooperation of the owners and of the property. I know we were trying to, we had a sec, we scheduled this, we continued this from last time because we did not do a a, a site visit. I think it was important that we do one. And I appreciate their cooperation in this, in the property owner and the tenants as well, who made themselves available for us to observe the unit interior and exterior. Is there anything else that people who were on that site visit want to add? Either members or staff that I missed? That's pretty much it, I think. The following submissions have been received by town staff. They are a memo from attorney Tom Reedy dated September second, a waiver request memo from attorney Tom Reedy dated September second, ZBA special permit two thousand and twenty, twenty-two dash zero four special permit application, prospective purchasers management plan, the additional information required for apartments, prospective purchasers lease plan, ZBA two thousand and two dash twenty-one approved special permit, that's the existing special permit, an email from attorney Reedy dated October twenty-sixth, a parking plan dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. I also think that we received a, I read a note from the prospective owner, Mr. Killian O'Connell, as well as we have a list of, of complaints filed with the town of property. But we'll go through that in a second. And town staff submissions of the project application report dated October twenty-sixth. We also had one early for the earlier meeting. A residential rental property permit, a landscape plan with lighting, trash, storage and parking dated two thousand and three, two thousand, approved two thousand and three condition six under ZBA special permit, the zoning map, ZBA requested items for the, for the ZBA application twenty twenty-two oh four, a list of complaints filed on properties owned by Kelleran Properties LLC, project application report dated October twenty-sixth. We also received waiver requests from the applicant for a building plan, a lighting plan, a sign plan, site plan, the lighting plan and a landscape plan. We've got repeated there, but but five waiver requests. Is there anything else that people want that was submitted? Marine, I think we covered it all, didn't we?
Yes, you did.
So who's here to, to present for the applicant?
It is I, Chair.
Mr. Reedy and for the prospective owner?
Alan, you're muted.
You're muted, Alan.
Rookie mistake. My apologies. Allen St. Hilary Valley Property Management. In the capacity of management for the prospective purchaser.
Got it. And just need the address to cut off, cut you off, Mr. Reedy, for your address and.
Sure. Tom Reedy, Attorney at Baker Wilson, uh, here in Amherst, Sixth Southeast Street.
Mr. Flair, who are you affiliated with?
Uh, Valley Property Management, thirty-five University Drive, Amherst.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reedy, do you want to proceed?
Yeah, sure. Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Waskevich, Ms. Pollock. For the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney at Baker Wilson, uh, in Amherst. I mean, I think the, the chair summed it up pretty well, and I think Ms. Pollock's project application report does a really good job of, of summarizing, I think, where we are. I know we were here October fourteenth, had some, I think, very good productive discussions. Subsequently, there was a site visit on, I think it was this past Tuesday. Hopefully, everybody saw, you know, the ones that were able to make it out there, and if you weren't, hopefully you're able to drive by. Phillips Street's a tough street. I think uh, the current owners have done a, a, a good job of maintaining that property. You know, I, there, there's a three-bedroom, uh, which under the permit can't exceed four folks in it, and then there's a two-bedroom, which under the permit can't exceed three folks in it. I think you heard at the site visit that there are less than those numbers in there now. We're not looking to change any of that. We are just looking to eliminate or, as it were, modify the condition that would cause this to expire upon change of ownership. And so, um, you know, I, I saw the language in the project application report and I uh, had gone back to Ms. Pollock a little earlier today with some suggested language based upon really what we had talked about last time relative to a mortgagee and, and a lender and what they would be looking for to, you know, effectively loan on this property as a, as a two-family property, for lack of a better phrase, instead of a single family. And so I think as far as like the, the instant owner is concerned and you walked through, you saw the type of ship that they run and we have asked, and I think the town had asked Alan to be here, and I know that you probably have some questions for him. I'm happy to answer anything else, but to a certain extent, it feels like there's a little bit of a transition happening. So I'm happy to, like I said, answer any questions, but if, if you want to talk to Alan, I can be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. St. Hilaire. Um, one of the things we're looking at, as you know, is, um, conditions having, first of all, having a conversation with the, the new owner or his agent and, and management. So if you could speak to the way in which you, um, will manage this property going forward and it changes, and there might be some questions from the board, um, if there are change about your management of the property going forward.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Um, just to give you a little background on our company, we've been in business in Amherst since two thousand and thirteen, and I've been in management in Amherst since two thousand and six. So we've got a broad experience base and have a, I feel a good working relationship with everybody in town, including town officials. And for, for the relevance to this particular property, we do manage three, uh, two, three-unit buildings at the other end of Phillips Street at the intersection of Nutting Add and Phillips Street uh, to great success, uh, very, very few complaints on that property over the years. Occasionally, you know, noise complaints for voices on a porch and things of that nature, but nothing of any severity. Uh, along with multiple other properties, we've got a few properties along Lincoln Ave and some other areas of town where, you know, the neighborhoods are sensitive and the folks are watching and, and we're watching. So, uh, you know, we do weekly checkups on the properties. Uh, one of the questions that came up, Ms. Pollock, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to get back to you because it came to me so late in the day, but it was about parking and managing the parking on the property. Uh, we check up on our properties, at least by drive-by, and if something looks off, you know, by walk around the actual property uh, every week. And so if there is an issue with parking, if, if there is a historical issue with parking, I'm unaware of that, but if that was just a general inquiry, uh, we do check up on properties. Uh, I'm not aware of a parking issue at this property. We don't manage it now, but we do provide services to the current landlords in the capacity of finding, screening and placing tenants. So we are familiar with the property, we're familiar with the neighborhood, we're familiar with the owners and some of the issues uh, that have kind of come up in that neighborhood with other owners that, um, will remain unnamed. Um, that have, you know, kind of caused problems for a lot of landlords in town. But anyhow, uh, we do try to keep things upbeat, on track, um, on the straight and narrow and, uh, I don't see that being any different here at this property. And we're always available if there are, uh, need for correction, corrective actions, complaint responses, we're here, so.
So, just so we understand the current status, the, um, your client, Mr. St. Hilaire, is in the process of purchasing this property. Is this transaction completed or has it, what's, what's the current status of the transaction?
Uh, it is not completed. Uh, the, the transaction is pending on the outcome of tonight's meeting and the recording of the decision there to, I made reference to the current owners who are also clients of mine, but in a smaller capacity where we find and place tenants for them. We don't provide full service management.
Got it. Um, I had a couple of questions regarding the, your client, Mr. St. Hilaire. We got a letter from him, which expresses frustration he has had over some of the properties that he's owned over twenty-five years, having complaints, um, and even some fairly serious complaints about, um, I don't know what the technical term is, but the condition of the house. There's numerous noise complaints as well. Um, I, I went through those complaints and looked at complaints that came from property that, um, is owned by that company. And we've got ten complaints in two thousand and nineteen, I think seven complaints in two thousand and eighteen. No complaints in two thousand and twenty because I think there weren't many, as many students around, as also the town wasn't, it just wasn't as, there aren't very many complaints in two thousand and twenty because of pandemic. But he did say that, um, since you became manager of many of his properties, that those conditions, that those complaints have, um, been reduced. When did you start managing a lot of their properties?
On November of, November of two thousand and nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. So perhaps, so right now, we don't have any complaints in two thousand and twenty that I see on the list. Since you began managing, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. The other thing I want, I wanted to establish that, uh, number two, Phillips Street can be a challenge for a landlord and a management company. It's right next to the college. There's a dearth of parking, but there's, um, lots of people there, and I think now there's an awful lot of cars associated with students, probably more so than certainly when I went to school. Uh, much more likely for kids to have cars. One of the things that I have noticed, I drove past the property several times, and I know you don't manage it currently, but the current zoning permit, special permit provides for four parking spaces. I went by there twice. Once there was six and once there were seven cars parked in a lot uh, behind, along the side and in a lot behind the, the area. So it seems to me that there is potential there for, because it's a good big, it's a, it's an adequate parking space for maybe more than four cars. But right now, I think that there's a challenge in trying, seems to me that there's a challenge in trying to limit the cars to those, those for the parking plan. So I'd be interested in, I read your perspective parking plan, uh, that you submitted to the, um, to the board, and you don't have any way of, of, um, you don't put stickers on the car, but you, you see, you say that the cars have to be registered with your, your, um, um, management company. Is there a way to, um, would you consider having some kind of a sticker program so that there, if there is excess cars there, it's, it's, uh, and that are not allowed to be there? They can easily be identified and removed if that's a problem? Right now, it seems to me it'd be difficult to know which ones are your tenants and which ones are the right cars to, which ones have a right to be there.
I agree, Mr. Chair. I, I think that I'm at a bit of a disadvantage because I don't have the current leases presently to reference and see, well, how many cars they're allowed and any other measures that are in those leases to control them. Uh, we do have a sticker program available. We don't put it in place unless it's necessary. Uh, but we have hang tags that we can tie back to individual vehicle registrations and residents so that we can, you know, allow four stickers out there, uh, and, and we work closely with Ernie Stalling if necessary. Other vehicles can be removed. I think another thing that could be communicated to those residents is if they have guests, uh, they'll need to park legally on street as opposed to on the property. I think there's a number of side streets where street parking is permitted in that neighborhood. Um, and they could park their vehicles there as opposed to congesting the property. So yes, the answer is we could certainly accommodate that.
One other thing I noticed is that it's, that the special permit provides for four parking spaces. The lease provides for five parking spaces. This is a twenty-seven-year-old permit. Things have just changed or people have just modified their lease. So you'd want to take a look at that when you have your new, new lease for your, your, um, tenants. And I would think you might want to have, I think there is more than enough space for five parking places on that park property. Um, I, it looks to me like you can accommodate five cars easily without causing trouble there. And I would wonder if you would be, if it would be an advantage to the, to the landowner and, and to you to have additional parking. I think it would be a benefit to the neighborhood to take a, a car off the street and have it in parked efficiently and safely back behind the property.
I would agree.
Okay. So, um, it seems to me that on parking, then, one of the things that, it's not contained in your parking management plan, but it would, I would, it would seem to me that if you could come up with a sticker plan and um, an amendment, and we can amend the parking plan, the, uh, conditions to have five parking spaces that probably solves the part, I think it solves the parking problem. Um, if we could do that, if we'd be agreeable to doing that. Or hang, hang tag, if you could submit that post this meeting, um, just have it adopted by the, reviewed by the town staff.
Sure.
Would you be, okay, that'd be great.
Be happy to do that. In fact, I have. And we've provided samples to other ZBA proceedings. If you have one handy that I can kind of hold up to the camera to show everybody here. So we could submit a copy of that. Uh, and what we do is just write on the backside of them with a Sharpie marker, the vehicle description and plate number, and that gets tied back in our records to the vehicle owner. Uh, so it makes it very easy for our staff or for Ernie Stalling to come in and enforce any unauthorized vehicles. And the nice thing about the hang tags is if someone goes home and needs to get tires on their car and brings their mother's car back for the following week, they can transfer that tag and, and not get towed erroneously as opposed to a permanently affixed sticker.
Sticker. Yep.
And they are sequentially numbered so that we know that there's not duplicates out there.
I'm familiar with some of your other properties having that, um, sticker or that tag pro, program. It makes sense to me. So, um, seems to me that that's a condition we can just make that you get back to the town with that and amend the parking plan, uh, that's contained in the submissions to incorporate the, um, the hang tag. Okay?
That sounds good.
The other, the last thing is that I, last question I have is on lighting. Um, this, this permit was back in two thousand and two or just twenty-seven years ago, before there was consideration of dark star compliant, dark sky compliant lighting. I, I don't think that it's reasonable for, um, the board to require replacement of existing lights. But to the extent, whenever you are going to replace an addition, uh, uh, a existing light because it's malfunctioned, it's old or you're putting up new lighting, uh, dark sky compliant lighting would be, um, would make sense. And I think it would, uh, we do it consistently across the board at the, at all of our special permits now. Um, would that be a problem for the, the owner, Mr. St. Hilaire, to?
No, that would not be a problem.
Okay.
Uh, and we have some experience, as you know, with, with the dark sky compliant lighting and properly lighting parking areas. So we're, we're happy to include that and keep that in mind.
Good. Um, I have, that concludes my initial questions, uh, questions for members of the board. All right. No further questions from members of the board? Let me just run through, I was hoping there would be because I would run through, I wanted to review the conditions again, but just give me a second. I want to make sure that I have covered all the items. Oh, there's, there's one other thing I did notice that when you review the lease, Mr. St. Hilaire, uh, make sure that there is the, the, the occupancy numbers are consistent. I noticed at some places that the occupancy numbers in the lease and, um, are not consistent. So just review that. It's, it's not a big deal, but it should be done if you do that. That's it. And I noticed you did, uh, you did have a complaint response form and that is, or a nuisance, you call it a nuisance response form, and that is, um, to contact your business and your twenty-four-seven operation. Okay, so I'm satisfied with that. Um, one of the conditions that we are going to, that I think we should consider is, and it's been modified since the project application report was presented to the board, passed out to the board, is, and we'll discuss this during the public meeting portion specifically, but I want to get it on the record. This, um, basically, the, the condition would say, instead of expiration upon transfer, the permit shall expire upon change of ownership unless prior to the change of ownership, the prospective property owner shall apply before the, till appear before the zoning board of appeals at a public hearing for review and approval of the management plan, complaint response plan, parking plan and man, and map lease agreement, and to determine whether additional conditions are needed to meet section ten point three eight findings under the zoning bylaw. Notice shall be made in accordance to general laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, ZBA rules and regulations. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the foreclosure by a mortgagee on the property shall not cause a permit to expire provided that the mortgagee or purchaser under contract to purchase from the mortgagee follows the process of this condition within sixty days of its foreclosure. In other words, then the bank has, would have sixty days in which to, uh, comply with the, um, coming to, to the board and reviewing the complaint response form and et cetera, the mark parking management form. And under that, in that condition, it seems to me that you have, um, met the requirements of that condition. Um, but that's one of the conditions that we will, that I would want to consider for this, uh, special permit application. Are there? If there's no comments from the board, uh, we should open it up to comments from the public. Marine, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to comment?
If anyone from the public wishes to speak, they would press the button, raise your hand, or if you're calling in, you would press star nine. I'm not seeing any.
I don't see any either. Okay. So there's no, uh, no need for you to respond to public comments. I think the next order would be to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open um, in case we need to gather additional information. And I would entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting on this matter while keeping open the public hearing. Is there a motion to that effect?
Removed.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion. This requires a majority vote. Uh, it's a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Cochran?
Aye.
So we're now in the public meeting. That's time for the board to consider and discuss and vote on conditions, findings and the, and approve or reject the application for the special permit. But first, I think I'd like to get a sense of where, um, people are, if there's a, anything that we did not cover over the, either in the, in the project application report and the uh, possible conditions or anything that is new to you today that would, um, that you want to discuss before we go through conditions and other things and findings. That would um, you want to discuss before we go through conditions and other things and findings. Mr. Maxfield?
As you say, um, I like the wording, the, that new condition. I think it, it addresses a lot of the issues. Um. I had with it, I, I still think at some point we should probably have administrative meeting to try to just look at our own procedures. But um, that's my, my, my question still here, especially looking at some of these complaints here is, how? Really, how are we, we just enforcing any of this? Is this also a question really for, for? Administrative meetings to see how are we doing enforcement? How are we doing procedures? Cause I, I. I like that condition. I think it sounds good. I don't want to hold up this application because we need to get um.
Right.
Some of our own things together on this, but just in, in this case, uh, really what is our plan or? Is this really not, not even the time for that something we should maybe do a couple of months from now? Uh, what, what are your thoughts on that, Mr. Chair?
First of all, I think you raised a really good point, and it's one that I've discussed with the staff um, on several times, and I think we mentioned it last meeting. We should have, there's two things we should be, three things that we should be doing in a, an administrative meeting. I think we'd all benefit from having somebody go through how to read a set plan. That's still going to be valuable because they're not all going to be this easy. I still like that notion. But we're going to be coming up on this matter. We are going to be seeing lots of these. Um, special permits that have that specific provision that said that it lapses on the time of uh transfer of ownership. Uh, because there were, they were done ten to twenty years ago. It's just kind of a natural roll off of some of these special permits, and I think. Properties will sell for a good reason, and we're likely to see some of that. So I think it'd be good to talk through the reason that we think this is a good. As a board, talk through this provision, which I think is a model, at least a template for now. And see if we're comfortable with it, and I think we should do that in administrative meeting. And the other, the other thing that I think you raised, which is really good, is that we should understand better the, the. Um, capabilities and the uh of the town to do enforcement and when they can enforce and when they can't, what they need from the. You know, in terms of a complaint, what their authority is to go into buildings and to, to do health and safety inspections or noise complaints or. Everything is just, it is, it is um, something that I, I suspect we are, all are not familiar with. And so I think that would inform us as to what, why some of these conditions are either needed or are superfluous. If the, if it's something that's being handled by the town, maybe a condition isn't needed, but if it's not typically handled by the town such as. Parking on the street, uh, park, too many cars in the parking lot, um, then the condition is needed and. It's the help of the landlord to enforce that. So I think that's something we should do in November if we get a chance. Um, sooner rather than later, um, it'd be a good, a good time for administrative meeting. I know that's not right on point, but it's a good time to ask a question and we can proceed from, from now on and look towards that. Good. Any other questions or comments about the conditions and the findings? Tammy, or Ms. Parks?
Hi, um, I just wondered, um, I, I wasn't able to make it to the site um, visit. And I'm just wondering, some of, I'm just reading um, through the project application report and it was. Uh, there's a, a lot of comments, the board may wish to observe the current conditions, and I'm just wondering if you would. If uh people who did go on the site visit would comment on. The vehicles, I think, um, Mr. Judge, you were talking about the fact that there's room for five vehicles. Um, did anyone uh observe the trash storage bins?
Yes, we did. Uh, to answer your question, uh, we did, we were along the side of the um. Eastern side of the house and under the current ownership, it's a responsibility of the tenant. To move those out to the street, I think on. Uh, Wednesday or Tuesday, but there, there wasn't a, I don't think there was a um. A fenced trash area, but just large trash cans that were, that are kept along the side of the house.
Okay, um.
Is that what, does anybody else remember that? John, uh, Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Cochran?
Um, I also provided photographs of um, the site visit. Um, everyone should have received that, and I can certainly pull that up if that's helpful.
Did, could you do that? I'm sorry, I don't. I can't, I can't look at the split screen right now. Sorry, and I, the other thing I was just worrying, I was wondering about is the vegetation, if you felt that it was adequate and. Um, and that a landscaping plan wasn't needed.
You know, it was hard to judge. I, I would say, Ms. Parks said it was hard to judge whether the. Landscaping was um adequate right now because it's mostly grass around the front, a narrow strip in the back. The grass around the front, as you can see from these pictures, um, could use more tender loving care. But it was generally picked up. The grass on the side seemed to be in better shape, not this side, but the other side. And once you get in the back, it's, it's all parking uh area. So the only place I would say that, and it wasn't unusual in the neighborhood, but. The um, the grass in front could, could have used more tender loving care, but there wasn't, it wasn't. Outrageous, and I've seen worse. You see on the back, it's, the side, it's fine. And there is a, there is um. Let um. A fence and bushes that shield the parking lot. And the neighbor from the, from the next door neighbors on both sides, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, I'd like to start to proceed to consideration of conditions. What I'd like to do is run through the conditions that are proposed by staff. Um, review those and. At the end, um, unless there's an objection to one of these conditions. Uh, incorporate, vote on those conditions and then go back and do our findings. Cause I think it's, you, you can't do the findings unless you have the conditions approved. So the first condition is the language that was distributed. Maureen, did everybody get this language um, on the uh, the expiration of the permit? Or can we put that up on the, on the board? Yeah, let's put that up on the, on the screen. And I'll ask Rob also to apply on this, um, because we worked, I know with Maureen and Rob and Dave on this language. Um. But as you can see, as opposed to the, the permit expiring upon transfer of ownership. My concern with that is that we, that we don't have the ability under the um, existing. Uh, conditions, uh, can just limitations on special permits to bring in the new management and talk to them. We don't have the ability to make changes on those conditions. Because the changes that might have occurred over the last twenty years, changes in the neighborhood, we don't have an ability to respond to neighbors. Who, and, and, and then the neighborhood that may be um. Affected by the existing use of the property. And this gives us the opportunity to correct anything, and also sometimes to help the landlord, quite frankly, in cases of the, the parking. And it's a good process to have a um, a discussion about that with, about the property and the use at that point in time. Um, so here's what this one says, that. It shall expire unless, and then the, unless prior to the change of ownership, the prospective property owner. Appear before the zoning board of appeals at a public hearing for review and approval of the management plan, the complaint response plan. The parking management plan and map. I think, were, were we going to change that language just a little bit, Maureen? I think. We're gonna, yeah. Parking plan, parking map, yeah. And the lease agreement to determine whether additional conditions are needed to meet section ten point three eight findings under the zoning bylaw. And then we want to make sure, this just says that notice has to be made as with any public hearing. Um, to the public, and notwithstanding the foregoing, the foreclosure by a mortgagee on the property shall not cause. The permit to expire provided that the mortgagee or the purchaser under contract to purchase from the mortgagee follows the process of this condition within sixty days of its foreclosure. I don't know that this property is under um, any uh threat or under imminent foreclosure. It was something that was brought to our attention from, by Mr. Reedy as a possible, um, something we should be thinking about. I know that um. Mr. Mora, Mr. Washev, Washevics and Ms. Pollack and I all discussed this, and it seems that it's probably not a very likely occurrence, but. It isn't covered under the, the upper, the previous paragraph. And this one, I think, would uh provide us the ability. To get the new, the mortgagee, that is the bank, if they're owning, if they own this. To provide a complaint response plan, a management plan or parking plan, at least um, after they own it for more than sixty days. There any questions about that condition? This is new, um, and I think it serves as a template, but it's something, of course, we can. Change as we move through the uh, other applications in the future. So I think as we review the uh, the possible conditions, um, first is that if you just go up, Maureen, the first one is conditions one, two, three, four, five, and six. Stay in effect. The second is that, uh, we just talked about it. The third. Is the product of the sustenance of mostly standard things, the product should be maintained as needed, and any substantial changes from improved plan shall come back before the zoning board. And that includes the things that we have talked to them about. The approved management plan and complaint response plan shall be followed by the property owner. Exterior lighting shall be designed and stalls to be shielded or downcast. Um, to avoid light trespass and light fixtures shall be selected according to dark sky compliance and ZBA rules. No more than four unrelated individuals should occupy each unit. I guess, is that, is it supposed to be three for the second unit and four for the first? I think that's right. Um, Mr. Saint, Mr. Reedy, I think that's what the current situation is.
Correct.
Mr. Mora, uh, Mr. Mora, Mr. Saint Hilaire. Does that comport with your understanding as well that it's four in the front and three in the back?
Uh, that, that, that is in line with what I've heard to date and uh, Mr. Reedy has reinforced this evening.
Okay, Maureen, we should just change that to four and three. Any dwelling unit on the property being rented shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the residential bylaw. The street numbers and for both dwellings should be clearly marked. Um, but it was reflective signage, parking sure, current improved services only, the parking shall be maintained as needed. Parking and drive should be constructed in accordance with article seven point one. Um, maximum overnight visitors, this is in the lease. Um. And I'm sure that this is um agreeable to the current and future owners. It should be three people, maximum stay of four consecutive nights. And the maximum number of people on the premises at any time should be twenty people. That's outlined in the guest pop, that's consistent with the guest policy outlined in the prospective owner's lease, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and lastly, the property shall be free of litter and debris. We would leave, this number eight would be deleted. Are there any questions about these conditions? Ms. Paul, Ms. Pollack?
Uh, so earlier, um, uh, you had asked Alan to submit a parking management plan, um, and he had talked. He had shown the board a, a picture of his standard um, parking decal. So should there be a condition um stating that? That the applicant, the prospective applicant will submit uh, the parking management plan, which will outline how parking will be managed and enforced by.
By a hang tag, by, so, yeah, as per our discussion, some, but he has, he does, he just has to submit it to the. To the uh, commit, the building department uh for uh approval. We doesn't have to come back to the, to the board for that.
Okay.
All right.
And I, I, just to clarify, I believe that you went through uh, the condition that I've highlighted now about um, any dwelling unit on the property should be rented.
And registered and permitted in accordance with the rent, yeah, residential rental property by law. If I didn't, I should have. Okay. So we have to make findings. If, if there's no objections to those conditions, we have to make findings under ten point three eight. For, uh, I guess I would just ask one other thing, Rob, Mr. Mora, um, or Mr. Washevics, did you have any comment on? The conditions and specifically the, the new condition on transfer. These work with, for you and is there anything you need to say about it?
I, I do, I think there, uh, I think there's, it's a good condition. Um, I do have questions about the, the second. Uh, clause there with the foreclosure. I assume Mr. Reedy suggested it because he thinks that will work. I, I do have questions about the sixty days and. Actually dealing with a bank, I think if a mortgagee is an individual, I think that works a little smoother, but as a banker. Um, a property that goes into foreclosure, with my experience, sixty days isn't really a lot of time to get much done, but. I think it's a starting point for the board. Uh, I don't think we have to work out every detail tonight, but. Remember to, uh, let's revisit that and make sure that condition, you know, I, I like the idea of what it's doing.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I think maybe it needs a little bit more uh adjustment.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, maybe we put the word sale after foreclosure, just so we're. You know, so it's the foreclosure sale. I'm actually going through something similar um, in East Hampton, and so it's East Hampton Savings Bank that's foreclosed on a two family. They've held a foreclosure sale and they're saying to the client, you have to buy it within thirty days of that date. And so that's why I thought sixty days was probably, you know, from that sale, banks don't want to hold it any longer than they need to. Um, so that was just the thinking that sixty days would be sufficient because it's more likely to be. That prospective purchaser to get in there than it is really the bank. Only if the bank's buying it back at foreclosure, are they the ones that are going to probably head in.
You know, that, that raises a question. I mean, it's a good suggestion. I understand what you're getting at, but it raises a question for me as well, and it goes to Rob, to Mr. Mora's point. When it's sixty days of foreclosure sale, that means if that bank holds that property for a year or a long period of time. The um, there is no. Review of their management plan or anything else in the, in the time being. I'm not sure if that, I don't know the answer to this, so.
They wouldn't technically own the property during that time?
But.
Because the, 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 the person who was the owner, as far as you're concerned, would still have what's called an equity of redemption. So that they would have, they actually own the property until the bank actually. Forecloses, has that foreclosure sale, the for, and the foreclosure sale is really like. Foreclosure by entry, they go in, they have, you know, Posnick or somebody do the auction there. So stepping back and saying, to your point, what happens if things go sideways with the person who's owning the property? They're just not um, keeping it up. Then I think there's probably the ability, you know, provided that there's sufficiency in the management plan, the lease, et cetera. If you're not seeing the properties being managed according to the management plan, inspection services go, can go in and issue a cease and desist. And then you can get them back in front of the board a lot quicker, uh, if it's just a delinquent landlord, I guess is the way to put it. But the bank. Wouldn't be that new owner, so it wouldn't trigger that change of ownership at that point.
This is why it makes sense that this is a start on this provision uh for. And it's, because it, it gets complicated, and I think, I always, I worry also. Uh, so anyway, uh, for me, that I think either way works. I think it's a start, and um, I think this is exactly what we need to cover in our administrative meeting. And we can do more work on it then, but I'm hap, I'm fine with the word sale there because I don't think we can solve this problem tonight. Okay, um, we've got to make some findings under ten point three eight. So ten point three eight and ten point three eight one. Um, requires that we find a proposal suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and, or the town. And is deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority, the proposals compatible with existing uses and other uses by right in the same district. I think we satisfy that through the uh condition. Is it two, Maureen, on the uh, change of ownership as well as. Um, lighting and um, and the other conditions that we've placed on the property. Um, ten point three eight two, three, three, three eight five and three eight seven, all deals with nuisance, I think by changing the um. Dark sky compliant, uh, if, upon change of light fixtures, also on the reduction in, or. Uh, increase in the number of, of cars that can park there and reducing the parking on the street. We've reduced the um, the nuisance. Ten point three eight four requires that we find adequate and appropriate facilities provided for operation of the proposed use. That's already, they're already in existence and there's already appropriate facilities. Um, perform, the proposal ensures that it's in performance of parking and sign regulations. I think pending the um, submission of the parking plan, that will, something that we will find, that with, with that pending submission, we'll be able to find. that with that pending submission, we'll be able to find that for Article seven and eight.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, which just reminds me, so to add as a additional condition, so the board, the board observed, so the applicant submitted, submitted a parking plan that shows four parking spaces, and on the site visit, you observed that there was perhaps, you know, there was a car utilizing perhaps a fifth parking space, and it looked like that it was a, you know, a safe and convenient location for parking space. And tonight you suggested that the applicant as a way to, you know, get people off the street from parking on the street to add another parking space on the property. So perhaps you should add a condition that the applicant submit updated parking plan to show that fifth spot as shown, as observed at the site visit.
That's good, that's a good point, Maureen. Just saying that's not a problem, is it?
That's not a problem for me. I made the assumption, perhaps a faulty one, that that would be included in the, in the parking management plan that needs to be submitted to town officials.
We'll make wording there so that there's no confusion. That's perfect, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Pollak. I think by, the proposal provides for convenient and safer traffic, I think by observing the parking and reducing the, and having a parking plan with a tag on it will have less cars parked in the property back there, and that should provide for safer vehicular and pedestrian movement. Adequate space for off-street loading is applicable, ten point three eight nine. Mess of sport waste, I think it's, we observed it, it, it is consistent with what is else, what is also in the neighborhood. Ten point three nine zero, proposals ensure protection from flood hazards, this not in a flood zone. Three nine one deals with historic scenic features, it's not applicable. Three nine two deals with landscaping. Pursuant to the question that Ms. Park had, Parks had, it is vegetated. I think it does a good job of shielding the neighbors. I think a good management plan would probably do a better job on the, on some of the grass in the front. But you'll, you can take care of that, I think. Ten point three nine three, the board wishes, I think, deals with minimizing light, I think we dealt with that in the dark side. Compliance requirement for replacement of fixtures. It's not, there's no steep slopes, there are no, it's not in disharmony with respective terrain. Stories are the docks dumpsters. That's, it seems to me it's consistent with the neighborhood. The proposal provides adequate recreational facilities, that's not, that's not applicable to the project. Proposals in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, I think that's the case. In terms of the, the last thing, in terms of the trash, Mr. Saint-Hilaire, do you have any plans to have like a fence or any kind of screening for the trash can?
To, to be honest, Mr. Chair, I hadn't given a lot of thought to that. I, I was focused on kind of complying with the existing permit, with the exception of the condition that was requested to be removed, but we can certainly be mindful of that and find a location that would be out of public view.
Does anybody on the board have a concern about the trash or the, or screening of the trash receptacles? Okay. Take a look at it and see what you can do to reduce the visibility from the street, perhaps screening would be, would make a lot of sense. I move that we accept the conditions as stated, and that we make those findings that I've run through on the, this application. All right, I would accept the motion that we adopt those conditions and that we make the findings as I stated. Do I have such a motion? So move, Maxfield, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Parks? Any discussion? We'll vote on those two things before we vote on the, the application. If there's no discussions, it's a roll call vote. Chair votes aye, Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Oh, hold on.
One question before you vote on this. So, so for this application specifically, are you all set? You reviewed the, you reviewed the conditions from the previously, your special permit. You've added new conditions and, and they've provided all the information needed for a condition, for the new condition too. So, so in a way, if Killogren does purchase this property, the, the new owner would not need to come back?
That's.
Okay.
Yes, that's my, that's my intent. As long as the parking and other information that we, we ask of the prospective owner is submitted to the town, it would not need to come back.
So would the board like to make a motion to transfer the special permit to Killogren?
Yes, but I think we should do that after we adopt the conditions and the, after we adopt the conditions and the the findings.
Yep.
So, back to the vote, I vote aye, Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Cocker?
Aye.
So we've adopted the findings, and we've made the findings and adopted the conditions, the vote. Now the question before the board is, shall we approve the special permit application and transfer the special permit to the new owner, Ms. Kilren Properties? Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Maxfield?
I'm sorry, do we, do we have a, a motion for it, or we just discussion, discussing prospect?
We, we, it's, it's what's, we haven't had a motion put before us yet, but that's what we should, we should discuss that before we do it. Or we can discuss it once we make the motion too, either way, but I was just opening it up to see if anybody had comments or questions.
Well, I'll just go with procedure and, and make the motion.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I just, can I just say, subject to the actual conveyance to Kilgarian Properties?
I'm, I'm sorry, we did transfer this to Kilgarian.
Yeah, but just, so you're saying that you're making a motion to transfer the permit to Kilgarian Properties, I'm just saying, make that subject to them actually.
Buying it.
Property.
Yes, yeah, I, I don't want your, we're, we're not transferring this without purchasing the property. So that'd be the new owner, Kilgarian Properties, right? It would only be upon sale. Good clarification.
Thank you.
Good point. So we have a motion in front of us. We, we need a second.
I'll say again.
Mr. Gilbert, seconds, now we can have discussion on the motion. Looks like we've got consensus. Or at least silence. So that, that's good. All right. Without objection, we'll move to a vote. The chair votes aye, Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Cocker?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. The next order of business is ZDA twenty-two dash zero five. Lane V Floyd requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZDA FY twenty eleven dash zero four, in order to remove condition thirteen, which states, this permit shall expire upon change of ownership, located at two oh four, two oh six Beltratown Road, map fifteen C parcel thirty-two, neighborhood residence district, RN zoning district. Are there any disclosures? We did have a site visit on Tuesday. We walked around the prop, we began in the prop, in the parking lot, walked around the property, looked at the parking spaces available, entered the property and both two, both two oh four and two oh six, we were escorted to the property by the property manager. We looked at the, each of the rooms, pictures were taken by staff of each of the rooms. How the tenants were there, they were, they, they were, they shared their house easily, and we're, we're not disturbed by our presence. We walked outside, went to the second unit, did the same thing, came back, observed the land, and the, we did notice one light up front was not working, but it wasn't a door that was over a door that does not, doesn't seem to be used at all, or for entrance or egress to the building. But other than that, it was pretty, it was just an observation of what the state of the property. I will say that it seemed that the, the property was well managed, the property, the grounds were well managed, it was clean, and free of trash. The, the rooms themselves seem to be in good shape, and I, I found that it was a very well, it looks to be a well-managed property currently. I, I also want to say, in this case, one more time, it's a, it's a imposition of, we understand it's an imposition on tenants and on the property owner to go into the, into the property, but they were, I appreciate their cooperation and allowing us to do that, it gives us a better sense of what we're looking at. And in this case, I want to thank the property management firm and the tenants for being, accommodating us in, in our visit. Any other thing you want to add to the site visit? I want to go through the submissions from town staff on this property. Hold on just a second. So submissions are application for the special permit, a management plan, an application memo from Attorney Tom Reed, dated August twenty-sixth. Excuse me, yeah, August twenty-sixth, waiver request from, memo from Mr. Reedy, August twenty-sixth, previously approved ZDA special permit decision from two thousand and eleven. Applicants waiver request, site plan, building plan, lighting plan, landscape plan, sign plan, and management plan. Zoning for just additional requirements for apartments. Planning staff submissions include a zoning map, a residential rental property permit, and a project application report dated, one dated October eighth. Also, we have site from, visit, folks from the site visit, an existing leach for two oh four Beltratown Road, and an existing leach for lease for two oh six Beltratown Road. Is there anything else, Maureen, that we have?
There, there was an email correspondence from Mr. Reedy from October the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I missed that. All right. Who's here for, to represent the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chair, Tom Reed, Bacon Wilson, yeah, out of Amherst, Sixth Southeast Street.
All right, you may proceed.
Thanks. So I think you did a nice job recapping the site visit for those you, for those of you who are out there, I think you saw some pretty well-maintained properties. Beltratown Road is a little bit different animal, or I should say a lot different animal, than Phillips Street. You got farmland right behind it, preserved farmland. Much more space, I had just, before this meeting sent over, I had found those rental permit parking plans, and they each show eight spaces, so on, and, and I'm conflating a little bit because I'm also, we saw both two oh four, two oh six, and one ninety-two, one ninety-four. So just focusing on two oh four, two oh six, it showed eight spaces, as you all saw, there was sufficient parking off-street, sufficient maneuverability off-street, and then overall, just a pretty well-maintained site. You know, I, I haven't seen a project applicant, an updated project application report for this, but assuming based upon the last conversation from the last public hearing for nineteen Phillips, if, if the board, I don't know if the board is thinking about imposing the same condition for here, I guess my only comment there for consideration is one Phillips, no, nineteen Phillips Street, one of, it was in the RG zoning district, and this one is in the RN zoning district, as you probably all are aware, non-owner occupied duplexes in the RG zoning district have a mandatory expiration upon change of ownership. So that was different, because what you were just dealing with, with nineteen Phillips, was a converted dwelling, which doesn't have that requirement, so that's how we were able to do what we were able to just do. But I just wanted to put that out there for consideration. I know in the October sixth project application report, the board had mentioned that a future owner would come back at a public meeting, which I know oftentimes in the RN zoning district, the board has done when they've eliminated this condition. So I just wanted to get that out, to have the conversation about given the somewhat apples and oranges nature of Beltratown Road where these units are, and nineteen Phillips Street are that RG area closer to the university, so. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I, hopefully the site visit, you know, satisfied the board with what, what's going on out there and, and how it's being managed.
Rob or Dave or Maureen, can you clear up the point made by Mr. Reedy regarding the differences in RN and how that affects this application? It, it does not now require that the, is this, are you saying, Mr. Reedy, that the zoning bylaw now requires the lease expiration on change of ownership?
In the RG zoning district, for non-occupy duplexes, it requires the permit to expire upon change of ownership. So that is not a modifiable provision for non-owner.
That's RG, that's not RN.
Correct, cor- correct, correct. So I was just drawing a comparison to say nineteen Phillips, converted dwelling, I can much more appreciate what we just did based upon the sensitivity of the area versus and distinguished from the RN, which has no corollary for non-owner occupied duplex, which these are under the, the use code. So that was just an observation.
RN RG is all confusing to me still. And I just wanted to make, clarify that there is no, no mandatory expiration in this case upon change of ownership.
That is correct.
Other than the lead, the existing condition of the lead, of the special permit.
Correct.
Great. One of the things that, that I found, I mean, it's not a question of the current management, the current management seems to be doing a really good job. That was a, a well-run, I think it looked to me to be a well-run apartment house for students, or two plus for students. I was, I was pleased with it, and the property looks in good shape. The question is, how do we make sure that that continues with the next owner? And it seems to me you can't do that unless you have the ability to have the new owner come, the prospective owner come in and talk prior to the, to the transfer of property, just like we did in the last one. And I, it seems to me that that's the right way to do this. In this case, we don't have a prospective owner. We don't have a bona fide offer out there, and I think it's premature for us. My feeling is it's premature for us to grant the, the remove the, remove the, the existing condition that the lease expires without replacing it with something. And I think the, what, what we just replaced with a nineteen is a good model for that. And it allows the owner, when he has a, a, a new bona fide offer to come back in to know what to expect. He won't be facing the uncertainty that nineteen Phillips Street did. We were trying to figure it out, it would be out there, it would be known, it'd be expected, and I, I think that would make a lot of sense from my standpoint. But I would like to see what other people think, if they think that this condition should be replicated, at least for the time being, as, as what we do until we can have more time to talk about it at a later point in time at post-administrative meeting. But I think it's, I think it is a good way to proceed, but I'd like to get the feeling with other members of the board. Mr. Maxfield?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm definitely sympathetic to that, that point of, you know, if we were doing this maybe three months from now, we might just be more in favor of removing the condition entirely, but much like anybody who was applying for an ADU before inclusionary zoning, just the timing is off, so I, I, I think until we can have a, a more of a discussion of, of how we want to go forward this, or go handle these going forward, I, I think we should stick to the, the condition as, as it's written. As in, written in the previous case.
I, I'm getting some head chakings, which are yes, nod so, and thumbs up, so I sense a consensus here. I guess, I have no other comments, Mr. Reedy, you've major, you've done a good job representing your client. I think I want to give the public a chance to comment if they, if there is anybody that wishes to speak. And then we can respond, you could respond to any public comment if need be. If not, Maureen, I don't see anybody wanting to speak. Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting. While keeping the public hearing open and that we. Move, move to publicly, keep a public meeting open so that we can. Take other information if need be. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Mr. Cochran, you put your hand up, you beat him, you beat Mr. Maxfield, all right. The vote occurs on the motion. Unless there's discussion, I can't imagine. I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Mr. Cochran.
Aye.
All right, we're in the public meeting to discuss this application. It seems that, I think that the condition that we should impose on this. Application is the same one that we applied on nineteen Phillips Street. Remove the, what is it, condition, is it seven in this case, Maureen?
Yes, I believe so. Thirteen.
Oh, it's thirteen, it's, no, no, thirteen is. Two oh six, we're on two oh six, two oh four, two oh six Belcher Town Road, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so it's remove condition. Thirteen and replace it with the condition that we just voted for, for nineteen Phillips Street. I see no other conditions that we need to apply in this instance as prospective. And I think we have to make one finding on ten point three eight, and that is that this is. To be consistent and with the neighborhood, to avoid and be consistent with the town master plan. And to avoid. Nuisance and. Ensure the, the quiet appreciation, the quiet appreciation of fellow property and neighbor owners. Neighbors and fellow property owners in the area. So I think we meet ten point three eight one. Is it, those, that's, so the condition is the same, ten point three eight one is the finding. Is there any objection to those? If not, I move that we, I would entertain a, a motion that we approve. The, the amendment to the existing special permit with conditions. Which includes in the Phillips, same as the Phillips Street conditions and the finding that we are consistent with. Ten point three eight ones of the bylaws. Do I have such a motion?
Just to clarify, so you reviewed, you know, from the Phillips Street. Application, you referenced, I'll call it condition two. Which was like the permit will expire unless they come back, the prospective buyer comes back. Dot, 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 did you, did the board want to go through the other conditions listed? They are pretty much the same, but. From the other one, I, they are the same from the other ones, from the other applications, but I just wanted to. Clarify whether folks wanted to go through that or not.
But these are. Well, these are all the sta- I'm sorry, Maureen, these are the standard. I don't, you know, I think some of these, we should go through standard ones. But we know we're not, we are granting them the ability to. To transfer the ownership under certain conditions. But we're not, we're not changing, they're not. We're not in a position, I think, to impose new, to impose too many new requirements upon the property owner, because I don't think we have. Aside from, well, I, I have to look at the existing. Conditions, but I don't know that we want to impose additional conditions beyond the project, beyond number two. Which are pretty much standard. I'm guessing, I'm wondering why we need to put additional conditions on at this time, on this one, because they got to come back. If they're, if, when there would be a, a. A sale, perspect- perspective ownership, but at that point in time, we should put in additional property, additional conditions.
Sure, that, that's fine.
Anybody else have a different opinion on that, Mr. Moore, Mr. West, are you, am I missing something, or members of the board? I just think we changed, I think we should just change the, the transfer condition and move forward. All right, do I have a motion to, to. To approve the special permit, the change of the special permit app, condition. Number thirteen to the Phillips language.
Motion to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in fa- all in favor, I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Max, Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Mr. Cochran.
Aye.
We've decided on. One ninety-two, one ninety-four. These are confusing to me, we just did one ninety-two and one ninety, we did two oh four and two oh six, and now we're doing one ninety-two and one ninety-four. I want to speed up this process, I don't think we have to go through the whole thing again, except I have to say that we have before us. An application. To request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit ZDA two thousand and eleven dash three to move condition twelve. Which states this permit shall expire upon change of ownership located on one ninety-two, one ninety-four Belcher Town Road map fifteen C parcel sixty-four neighborhood residence district RN zoning district. Any disclosures, we have a site visit, site visit was exact, exactly the same as it was with the previous property. With all the existing, and I also want to repeat the commendations to the property owner and the tenants. Collegas imposing their life, but I don't think there's any reason to have a long discussion on this. Unless anybody on the board does, so I'd like to move, I would entertain a motion. I would like to see if there's public comment first, if there's any public comment, we do need to have that. And if not, I would entertain a motion to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open in case there's additional information that we wish to hear. I think we make this, Mr. Maxfield.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The discussion, vote occurs, I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Mr. Cochran.
Aye.
Great. I think we just do the same thing we did with the last one, folks, I think that we put in the nineteen, the Phillips Street provision. We make the findings under ten point three eight zero and three eight one. That these findings help ensure that the neighborhood will not be disturbed or made worse by change in ownership. And that's the reason for the change in the, the condition twelve. Unless, is there, is there any discussion to that? So I would entertain a motion to. Make the change to condition twelve, Phillips Street, to make the findings under ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one. And to approve the special permit modification with conditions. Do I have, is there, Mr. Maxfield moves, is there a second?
Second.
We've got a time, we've got two seconds.
I defer to Eric.
Any discussion? If not, the motion occurs on, the vote occurs on the motion, I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Mr. Cochran.
Aye.
Great, all right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good seeing you.
Next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. I don't see any. Next order of business is anything not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours, I have nothing in that regard. Mr. Maxfield.
I just want to say, if you want to start thinking about doing administrative meeting to try to make it productive. I know one of the things I'm thinking about that I would like to do, probably not going to, but they. Get the process moving, but it won't be done by the time we have an administrative meeting in November. I'd like to start even going through just our own process of. When you grab the form to apply for a special permit and go through it, like to see really what that looks like. I feel like we've been hearing from the, the past two people saying that it was a very difficult, confusing process. And I, we, we get, we end up getting the, the end result, but I'm not really sure what goes into. Getting that final product that even comes to us, so I, I'd like to see that. I'm not even really sure how to, how to go about that, where I'm not actually applying for a real special permit. But that's something, I don't know, Maureen, if that's something I could work with you on at some point in the coming weeks or so. To get that, that process going, I know it's one of the things I'd like to look at, to just get a better idea of when. Someone actually starts the process of coming to us, what does it really look like? Because it's one of those things, I can't imagine even I sitting on the ZDA would be even able to, to really get through this application. And bring something to this board without. The assistance of, of probably somebody like Tom Reedy or. You know, some other person who has that, that specialty of, of dealing with, with local municipalities. So it's something I, I personally want to look at, I don't know if any other board members want to look at that as well. But just have a better sense of what our actual process looks like for somebody going through it before it even comes to us.
I think that's a good subject for an administrative meeting. I would encourage you to, to work with Maureen and find out on your own first, because I think it's something that'd be instructive. But I do think it'd be something that everybody would benefit from, Dylan, I think that would be a good idea. We have a lot on the agenda. You may need to administrative meetings, it's not the end of the world. But that would be, I, I think all the, the process things are important, especially with the newer members of the board. And our alternate members, we want to have them fully, as much as possible, fully informed on the process. I know we were, I know there are, one of the matters, so we'll put that on the agenda, and maybe for the first or the second. Administrative meeting. I also know that we have a vacancy on the board and the comm council will be considering that. I don't, I haven't heard if they have appointed anybody yet, but we have, I'm, we do have one vacancy and I hope that we'll have a. Alternate member in the near future pointing to our board.
We lost. But the guy we served with all the time, his name, I know very well, but I'm blanking on it right now.
Keith. You mean Keith?
Craig.
No, Keith, Keith has been gone for a while, I thought he was replaced by him.
Yep, he hasn't been replaced, but that Peter Barrett, is that who you're thinking of, no?
No, no, a, a military contractor. A former military contractor, what was his name, I'm blanking on it, we, we served with him all the time. He was on the four-member panel with us not too long ago.
Craig Meadows?
Thank you, thank.
Oh, he, no, he didn't leave, oh, he just has been unable to be at these meetings.
I, I thought he was taking over as a full member, did he, did he not, he is still associate?
He is a full member now, but he's, but he just wouldn't, wasn't able to be at these other meetings.
Oh, we're filling an associate member position.
Filling an associate member, yeah.
Okay, there we go, that, that's.
Yeah. All right. Any other? Maureen, when's our next meeting?
So the next regularly scheduled meeting for November, so town offices are closed on. Let me go to November calendar.
The eleventh.
The eleventh, so November eleventh, town offices are closed because of Veterans Day. And town offices are closed on November twenty-fifth because of Thanksgiving. So it looks like we're only going to have one meeting in November, November the eighteenth. At least that's a regular scheduled meeting. I do have a potential public meeting to add to that agenda. And perhaps we create, hold an administrative meeting prior, so have it. That evening, what do folks feel about that?
My one question would be, if the subject matter is, involves a removal of the expiration. I'd rather have it after we have a discussion. If the subject matter is something else, then we can, and we can run through it quickly if it's not highly contentious. We can do the subject matter for the, the application first and then go into the administrative meeting.
Yeah.
But it's a lot, if, if it's a, if it deals with that same subject we're going to be working on, I, I think I want to. Talk about that first amongst the members before we act on another application.
Sure, well, I, I, you and I can speak outside of this meeting to see what, which order would make sense. But are folks available for the November the eighteenth? And I guess I should ask the other ZBA members not present as well, as well for the administrative portion.
Send out a doodle, but I'm, I'm here.
I'll be available then.
Long as it's second and third Thursday, I've already got it marked in my calendar in perpetuity.
Wait, so this scenario, I think would be the third. Would be the.
Third.
Third, the eighteenth, so does, yeah, the eighteenth work?
I might have a contact with the Board of Licensing, if that's the case. But I'll, I'll find that out, I'll get back to you on that once I have an answer.
Okay, well luckily this, it would be a public meeting and then the administrative portions would be a public meeting. So I don't feel like we need to finalize the time and date at this moment. So yeah, we can sort it out by, like a doodle bowl or eat, just eat regular email.
Okay, folks. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Maxfield.
Just if nothing, I'm making the motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Gilbert. This motion is not debatable. I vote aye, Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
And Mr. Cochran.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everybody, I appreciate your time on this and I think we've come up with a.